All right, I'll bring call this meeting to order. Would you join with me?
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Kathy, can you hear us all right?
I can.
Would you please do roll call?
I sure will. Mayor McGowan. Matthew Lund. John Glondo. Ruston Weaver.
What's up Kathy?
Stephen Harper. Mickey Holtz. Beth Williams. Cam Radliff.
I'm here.
There you go.
Okay, approval of the meeting agenda.
I move that we approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second, moved to second to through approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed, meeting agenda is approved. I don't have any announcements or words or recognition. So down to consent agenda.
I make a move, we accept the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Consent agenda is passed. Okay, down to officer reports. Rob, our city administrator will be the first one to address the council.
Okay, thank you honorable mayor, city council. A few updates here. Fall cleanup days is next week, starting September 21st. So you should have received maybe even up to two weeks ago, a card in the mail that talks about, you know, your free, your free dump voucher. And so hopefully you've kept that and that's going on next week from September 21st to the 25th.
So I'm gonna interrupt a little bit, Rob.
Okay.
People need to really understand is that card that came in the mail is also their slip they need to use at the transfer station.
That's right.
And I hope people saw that and we have a way to help people out who have lost or that. I just want to mention that. Go ahead.
That's, that's good to mention, yeah. And we're also talking with waste management too about, about their contract next year, but that'll be coming up to the council soon enough. Also, it is budget season. I've been involved with the Kitcom budget process here now for at least a month or so and they, they did Pat last week, they passed their budget, the earliest I've ever known them to pass it. And there was some, some, a lot of talks about a lot of increases, but we kind of settled on 24% user fee increase. So that's what I've been up to with Kitcom. You probably already know this, but the, the fire camp that was out at our airport, they're all gone. They spent about 20 days camping out there and they packed up and left. And so that's what's happening at the airport. The August, my August building permit report issued nine permits for August for a total of 56 this entire year. And I'm bringing in almost 72,000. I also did 41 inspections for the month of August. Still a lot, a lot, a lot more inspections this year than last year. Also, as far as the IT world goes, our consultant has basically turned on the two factor authentication for everyone. That means council, you know, planning commissions. And so if you do have a problem with logging in, basically that means you have to associate your phone, your, you know, a phone that receives text to, to your login. And, and what that means is sometimes people have had to log in three times in order to kind of make sure all of the things are getting logged into. So if you have trouble, the best thing is just to call me and I can walk you through it or you can stop by. There's been a couple of council and, and the mayor, I've got him all figured out now. So that's.
Rob, Ken, Ken will be in after the meeting.
That's me.
Good. Yep, I'll be here obviously. So that's, that is all of my report tonight.
Hey, the treasurer does not have a report for us tonight, even though her name is there. That's her. And I don't know, planning Greg Dorn, do you have something to let us know about or are you there?
Good evening mayor, members of the city council. I, I do have two agenda items this evening, but I can touch upon a couple of other items briefly. With respect to the large scale projects, the extended comment period on the notice of application for the 47 degrees north project ended on Friday. There are still some more comments coming in and we are going to organize all those comments. The comments will be posted online and we'll also make a complete set available to the project sponsor. And then we will use all those comments as staff as, as a part of our review process when we are formally reviewing the application. With respect to, to city heights, there has been quite a bit of activity associated with the kind of dealing with the aftermath of the forest practices activities that occurred this summer. And we have issued a clearing and grading permit for the next phase of work with a, a very, very high and strong emphasis on the importance of, of restoring and repairing the ditches and swales and culverts that were damaged during the clearing and grading, I mean, the forestry process. And in making sure that the erosion control measures are in place before the weather changes. So we have been kind of continuing to try to get that process, that project on a, a process that is fully compliant with all the, the state and federal and local requirements. Clealum Pines West will be submitting the last two applications that would complete the Clealum Pines West Development Agreement. And as we are reviewing those applications, we'll also be working with the project sponsor to close out that development agreement. And also to let council know that we anticipate that sometime this fall will, the city will be receiving a, a proposed master plan and annexation agreement for property owned by Pat Deneen out by the airport. So it would be potentially another master plan development and annexation agreement project in the city, but we're still in the preliminary stages on that. So nothing has formally been submitted yet. With respect to current planning, typically by the end of the summer, projects are wrapping up and it's pretty quiet. And it is just the opposite. Right now, I think we have more projects and applications under review than there has been at any time in the past five or six years. And that's at it, the end of the development season. Megan Hayes is continuing to assist us remotely in the review and processing of the permits and applications. And we hope that as we are able to, to get caught up with the, all those permits and applications, that Megan and I will be able to put our heads together and to be able to provide a, a recommendation or a series of options on what might be the, some alternative courses of action for the city to take in filling the city planning position. So we hope to be able to do that within the next 30 days or so. And finally, with respect to long range and comprehensive planning, the comment period is concluding on the proposed revisions to the future land use map and to the official zoning map. There is still a public hearing to be held before the planning commission at their next meeting in a couple of weeks. And after that, we will be reviewing all the comments received with the planning commission and finalizing recommendations that will then come to the city council in the form of recommended revisions to the future land use map and to the official zoning map. And that will then complete a process that's been kind of moving along with bits and starts over the last couple of years. So that's a broad brush overview, but I'll mayor be back on the agenda for two specific items shortly.
Thank you for that. Next, we'll hear from our public works director, Mike Engelhardt.
Honorable mayor, council member, thank you very much. We have, if you remember a couple of meetings ago, I know it's been a while since we've chatted. We did have the review from Washdawd out at the airport and as Rob stated, we've been doing some work out there. The airport lights are all back up and working. We got the runway, the taxiway and the helipad all repainted. So the pilots can see easily for coming in for a landing. There is a couple of other items that we're going to look at that we've been discussing with some of the pilots that fly in and out on a regular basis. And with some of the trees along the northern edge of the runway there, apparently that's causing, I'm not a pilot, but apparently it causes a little bit of the way that the trees kind of zigzag in and out. It causes influx in the wind, which creates a little bit of a hazard when they're trying to land. And as the trees are growing, it's getting worse. So we're going to look into that really well as far as, you know, what we can do to help make our airport even safer. The crew's been running around town. Some of you might have seen them, especially over on Third Street. That's kind of where they're starting. Putting some recycled asphalt on the shoulders of the road and in the right of ways, trying to armor up those shoulders and get rid of some of the low spots in the potholes in the shoulders. So some of the property frontages are going to get some improvements. And we'll work with the residents to notify them when we're going to get in the area so they can move cars and we can get the town kind of dressed up. At the same time, when they have time, they're starting to work on getting the equipment ready. All the graders are officially serviced and ready to go. The guys are working on getting all the tire chains relinked and ready. We're anticipating a pretty good winter, hopefully this year. Put some snow on the ground and get some snow packed back up in the mountains for next year. That would be nice. They've also been doing their usual sewer jetting on an annual or regular basis with that. Our vac truck, which is as Jay calls it, the city cruise fire truck, because it's our main truck for emergency reasons. It's actually over in the repair shop right now. The oil pump transmission that runs the vector portion of it disintegrated. So this is, I talked to them today and got an update, everything, all the parts and pieces they need to put it back together are there with the exception of the transmission, which is out being rebuilt as we speak. So hopefully in the meantime, because as you all know, the sewer backups are something that are frequent in Clealum. We leased for a month a sewer jetter truck so that we could at least, and all it is, is the jetter. It doesn't have the vector capability. But at least we have a sewer jetter truck on site to where the guys are being able to respond to the many sewer backups that we have and getting those rectified so that we don't lose service to the residents. The water leaks thankfully are down right now, but they're still occurring. We had a pretty significant one that caused a small outage for a handful of residents up by the new, by Safeway up by the new ambulance garage. We got that put back online within a short couple of hours. I've been working with Willie. This one here is going to kind of get a little tricky. I've been working with Willie throughout a lot of issues we're starting to see happen at the water and sewer treatment plants. As we all know, those are aging infrastructures that facility is over 15 years old. As anything, cars, no matter what you're dealing with, when you're dealing with mechanical devices, they start to fail and we're starting to see that significantly at both facilities. So we're working diligently to try to find the most cost effective ways to rectify those situations. But with that, we're going to definitely have to start seriously looking at financial, you know, for the near future as far as, and the long future, as far as that plant is not going to last forever. And we're starting to get into some very expensive parts and pieces as Willie's been kind of attesting to throughout the last few months. So we'll keep you updated as that goes. And I'm sure Willie will touch some more on that as we get going here. And that's all I got for this week. Any questions?
We have a question.
Sewer plant and water plant are getting old. What about you and me and Gary?
Hey.
Brand new.
We get, we get younger as years go by. It's all in your heart. All right, thank you for that. Next, we'll hear from our police chief, Kirk Fland.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council. Just a few things, I'll be quick. We participated in the Roslyn Labor Day activities. They had the log show on Saturday. And then they had the parade on Sunday and both were well attended. And actually fun, it's a, it's a fun time up there for Labor Day. We've seen an influx of animal calls anywhere from loose horses to bears walking down the middle of the street. So that's been kind of interesting. Not sure why that is, but we've been experiencing a lot of animal complaints as of late. And the biggest news is that we're getting ready to do the testing process to replace Officer Uren's retirement position. And those will occur on September 24th. So hopefully I'll have good news after those oral boards are done. That's, that's about it unless there's any questions.
Well, but everything's quiet here, Kirk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll hear from our fire chief, Ed Mills.
Honorable mayor and city council, it's been a while since I've been out in front of you. So thank you for all that you guys do. A few things to report on, the call volume of August was at 49 calls. We had three fires. We had 35 to eight calls, two service calls and four good intent, two false alarms and two special incidents. Reporting on the fire calls, one was a cooking fire contained two stoves. So no extent on that. Another one was wildland reported a brush fire alongside I-90 due to wheel coming out from a trailer. And then the last was the structure fire we had on Second Street. And that was estimated to be electrical, still not final on the investigation, I believe, this time. So any questions?
I always wonder, what is good intent?
Good intent? That's when you, it's more like citizen assist. There's many different things you can choose in emergency reporting. Depending on who's writing the report and what depth they get into, it just depends on what section they hit and what it takes them to. So you know, when you have different, when you have 42 different volunteers and they all do a little bit different reporting, a good intent or a special incident or citizen assist could be very similar. So.
Got another question too.
Yeah.
I got quite a lot of flack from my statistics on that presentation I did a couple of weeks ago. And I'd really love for you to prove me wrong. I'd like to go through.
Well, a lot of that, Councilman Williams, you're going to find that during COVID, I asked my members not to respond to eight calls unless they were called specifically by the hospital district for backup due to the protocol with COVID, not knowing what was going to happen. Due to the extra expenses maybe occurred for the city with gloves, with masks, with possible having volunteers have to stay away for numerous different days if they were in contact with a positive patient. I asked them not to respond unless needed. Other than that, there are other conflicts with Kitcom not reporting that we're on scene because the radios are not being used. All my members don't have radios. When they show up on scene, if they don't call in, it shows that we weren't there when we actually were. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. My report. We did receive a life, a life support donation in the amount of $3,000. So I thanked them for that. And then later on in the agenda, I will be approaching you guys to talk about a mutual aid agreement. So any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll hear from our, our water and sewer plant operator, William LaRue. You hear there, William?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. I can hear you fine.
Good evening. In the package, you should find my usual graphs with the addition of a, one more graph, the peak flow month. And this is in response to council member Ratliff's question last month regarding our peak flows. I've added this graph that indicates the annual peak flows and during which month they've occurred. The data runs back to 2013. As you can see, looking at the graph that in fact, July 21 was the peak production for the treatment plant as far back as I have records for. So I will provide this additional graph to you on an annual basis. Most likely it'll be in my January report that gives the yearly review. But I just wanted to answer your question there, council member Radliff, so that you know, we could get that one cleared up. Project status, our VFD replacement, the drawings have been reviewed and approved. We ran into a little bit of a snag in the fact that the 175 amp variable frequency drive units were not available. It was going to take an additional eight to 10 weeks to get those built. So they asked if we would like to have an upgraded unit that was on the shelf, the 225 amp unit. And that was at no additional cost. And I said, yes, we would. That would give us the ability in the future, should we need to upsize a pump for any reason, we'll have the available amperage capacity within the VFD. The wastewater treatment plant, the SCADA upgrade, all phase has completed the visual screen and tax tag migrations onto the new platform. It is currently running concurrently to the existing system. And we will continue to monitor the new system for bugs or issues before switching control over to the new platform. So far, it's been fairly seamless and it looks real good. Up at the water treatment plant, we continue to work with McKinstry and the electrical distributor to try to get the failed LED lights replaced. We had to repack one of the irrigation pumps in August. The continuous operation during the hot days has just shortened the lifespan of the packing material considerably. And we passed our latest round of proficiency testing with another excellent rating for the water plant. Down at the wastewater plant, we have an isolation valve on the number one UV system that has a failed seal. This valve is very critical in the fact that it isolates the UV reactors from any water and allows us to get in under all conditions to do maintenance and or change bulbs or sleeves out. Due to the design of this valve with a seal on face, the valve has to be replaced. It can't be rebuilt in place. It's one of those where you just simply can't replace a gasket and call it good. So we're looking at several possible solutions, including the purchase of a new valve, which I've been quoted at $3,500 for that. Using one valve that we have in stock, it's the same size, but the drive shaft on it, the actuator shaft is two inch. So we would have to look at machining either a new bushing at the cost of $2,200 or trying to work with a local machine shop to see if they can fabricate a driver adapter for the larger valve. Part of the issue that we're facing is we have a very short window to get this work completed. The plant has to be taken offline to complete the work. And we have to wait for the river level to drop so that we aren't dealing with flooding coming back from the river into the UV room. So it's all got to be done before we start to experience the high flows of winter. One other item, I'm almost done here folks, bear with me. Power outage on July 2nd took down the number one UV reactor. Staff has troubleshoot the issue down to what we believe is a failed component within the reactor cabinet itself, quite possibly a capacitor. Due to the high voltage that is involved with this unit and the fact that we do not have necessary specialty equipment to confirm what we suspect is going on, we're going to have to bring in a factory authorized technician to, with all the fancy tools and the knowledge to do the work. And their day rate is $2,000 a day. But we have to have this second reactor available to us before the winter flows hit. As there are times during the flooding conditions that we've got to run both units to avoid violating the NPDES permit. As Mike alluded to, the facilities are getting older. We're starting to see some failures with some of this equipment. And I'm just hoping that we've got our rates set at a, at a level that's going to allow us to be able to make these repairs in a timely fashion. I know it's a little good news and a lot of bad news. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you folks may have.
He scared the wits out of them. They don't have a word to say.
I'm assuming we have the money set aside somewhere.
We have some. We, we definitely, there are savings. It's a regional expense. So. Okay, well, thank you for that, William.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay. So citizen comments on non-agenda items. We have one in the back here. Want to come forward and give us your name and.
Honorable mayor, distinguished council, I'm Liz Kurtz. I live at 112 West Second Street in Clealum. The first thing I'd like to do, and I don't know if this is protocol or not, but it matters to me that there was something incorrect in the August 23 minutes that I would like to rectify. And it's not Kathy's fault. She does an amazing job on the minutes and I don't blame her for not understanding what I said regarding the N-PERS National Fire Incident Reporting System. She referred to it as M first and she was close. But it, it matters to me that that is corrected. A while back, I mentioned I was going to see or submit public records requests to our Clealum Fire Department. And I did that. And I also said that I would come back to you with what I found when Chief Mills sent those to me. So let me first share with you some email exchanges that Chief Mills and I have had. "Chief, thanks for getting back to me. The reports you gave me are enough to help me understand your department better. Relying on volunteers is never easy, but you and Nate do it well. Best regards as you face the challenges ahead." And he says, "Thank you for reaching out to set up time to research your local fire department. I've been busy moving forward in efforts to advance our department for the good of this city." moving forward in efforts to advance our department for the good of their citizens, as well as make sure our volunteer force is not compromised. This takes much patient, patience and the ability to approach things with extreme care. I'm extremely busy at this point to meet in person. If you have any specific questions for me, just email them and I'll give the info or put you in touch with somebody who can. So, I'm gonna share my takeaway from, um, the, um, fire incident reports that, uh, Chief Mills sent to me. And the prevailing, um, um, focus is on lack of staffing and resources and funding and support and assistance. Um, in my opinion, um, that those, those delinquencies are what contribute to some of our fire departments' difficulty or inability to respond, um, in such a way that, um, I would feel more comfortable and that I, I live four houses down from the fire station. And so I would like to know that, um, I'm going to be able to be cared for as my neighbors and my friends. Um, and I think that the Clealum Fire Department is doing absolutely as much as they are capable of doing under the circumstances. I can't, um, I, I don't have a lot of knowledge about the, um, funding or the resourcing for the Clealum Fire Department. I'm strictly here as a citizen, aware of a concern and just trying to offer my ten cents worth here for, for whatever it's worth. Um, we have an excellent fire depart- or fire department too, but I mean, we have an excellent, um, state of the art police department, um, who also just received, um, permission for another, um, position, another officer. Um, we have Medic One, whose EMS, um, saves a lot of lives up here. And we are very grateful that they are, um, a very well organized and funded, um, agency. And of the three, the fire department is the like a redheaded stepchild in my view. Um, handling a s- uh, strictly an all-volunteer fire department takes more than a part-time chief. And it is my opinion that, um, we would be better served if we had a full-time salaried, benefited police chief and possibly an assistant, or I'm sorry, fire chief and an assistant fire chief as well to manage and organize that many volunteers. Our population is growing, um, we're annexing land, and we've got a lot of new things happening up here, which is gonna make it more difficult for our fire department to respond in such a way that they can take care of business. And um, while I like the idea of the RFA, and I understand it, and I think it's a good thing, I think that, um, the Clealum Fire Department deserves a chance to get what they need to do what they can do and show this community that they are capable and so much more. Um, but they need the support and the funding and the staffing to make that happen. That's my opinion. Um, I think they need time to get up to speed, and they are only doing as much as they can. And it's clearly not enough. And so, um, I'm throwing my hat in the ring on behalf of Chief Mills as a citizen and supporter and hopefully friend.
Thank you for that. Any other citizen comments? Oh. Uh, Rob, has anyone raised their hand online?
Yes, I'm looking and I, I don't see anybody raising their hand. Um, they can unmute themselves, so if you'd like to unmute yourself now and speak, but there's nobody raising their hands.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's it for citizen comments. And, uh, next we'll go down to, uh, oh, Stephen?
I know it's out of order, but I would like to address, uh, the one comment. And I would move that we amend the scribner's error on page one to reflect the comments of the, uh, citizen.
Oh, yes, for sure. That, 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 that would, uh, Kathy would take care of that without a motion, but if you wanna, someone second that.
We approve the, we approve the minutes, so it'd be, I believe it'd be appropriate to motion.
Okay, so there's a motion to, uh, to correct the minutes as presented. Is there a second? Second. Okay, uh, there's, it's brought, been brought to your attention that the scribner's error in the minutes from the meeting.
Was M first, what was it supposed to be?
NFIRS.
NFIRS.
Okay. Questions on the most? There are none? All in favor with I?
I.
Close? Okay, the correction will be made. Thanks, Stephen. Okay, public appearances. So now we'll hear from the Upper Kidditas County Recreation Committee, right? I thought?
Well, M first is a pretty good approximation.
Oh, yeah, that's all right, but they, we'll make it, we'll make it right, you know? It's not a problem. Hey, Claire.
Good evening. Um, I think, Rob, do you have the PowerPoint presentation by chance?
Yeah, I sure do. Uh, would you like me to start it now?
Yes, please. We were just thinking that would make it easier for the folks that are, um, virtual to see what. And before we start, I just wanna say thank you to the city and to all the council members because none of this happened without your guidance and support. So this is your good work, um, and we really appreciate the support. So I'm here with what I think is exciting news. Um, we just wanted to share an update and with some of the things that we're up to, and hopefully a lot of you already sort of know some of this, because I think we're doing a good job of getting the word out there. And can you go to the next slide, please, Rob? Thank you. Uh, so we're gonna talk a little bit just about who the UKCC RCA is. It's a mouthful. And a little bit about the project. We won't do the group discussion, but I am really happy to answer any questions that you guys have. And then hopefully we'll leave here understanding where we're at with the project, and then if you wanna get involved, um, how you can get more involved. Can you, next slide, please? Sorry, that feels really weird to say. I usually do that at work myself. Thanks, Rob.
So you have an assistant tonight?
I know. I feel really special. And so first of all, uh, I represent the Upper Kidditas County Community Recreation Center Alliance, UKCC RCA for short. Um, and we're a new not-for-profit that was formed a few months ago. And currently, we are assessing the feasibility of a community recreation center. So right now, we just are asking the community, what would you like to see built in terms of a facility, programs and activities? We're starting this with a clean slate. So everybody that comes to me and says, I hear you're the group building a pool. We may or may not build a pool. Right now, we really just wanna know what the community wants, um, in a facility, and so I'll talk a little bit about how we're doing that. Um, so this very first step is a feasibility study to gauge the interest in a potential recreation center. I think the community wants a recreation center, but it's possible they'll tell us we don't want a recreation center, so we really wanna be open-minded as we're going through this process. Uh, next slide, please. So a little bit about who we are. Um, in addition to me, there are several folks in this room that are involved with this project right now. Gary's sitting right back here, the Honorable Mayor. It's on our committee. Matthew has graciously built us a gorgeous website. Couldn't have done it without his help. I saw Lucy on the line. Lucy's involved, so as the project progresses, our group is getting a bit bigger. Um, and hopefully you've seen us out and about, uh, the different festivities that have been going on this summer. Um, the markets, sporting, sporting events, anywhere where we can talk about, um, what we're doing with the community. Uh, next slide, please. So again, a little bit about our approach. We obviously don't really have anything, um, that's similar to what we're talking about, why we're talking about it. Um, we're, uh, commissioning a feasibility study to see what the interest is, and instead of jumping straight in just to designing and building something, uh, we really wanna talk to the community about what they want us to do. So this first part of the process, um, we're surveying, and our goal is to get a thousand surveys. We reached that goal, um, last week. So the survey is open till the end of September, so we're gonna keep collecting surveys. But it's just been incredible momentum in terms of everybody's willing to take the survey. It's about two minutes. Haven't taken the survey. On the sign-in table, I left our little flyers with QR codes. If you're on social media, I've heard this is everywhere. So please take the two minutes to take the survey, because that is our goal right now. Um, after we conduct the survey, we're gonna talk about three alternatives that we will present designed to the community, and we'll talk about how much these things cost. Um, I don't know what the numbers are gonna be, but I hear a pool will probably cost a bit more money than a facility without a pool. So it's really gonna be important that we um, show the community the options that are out there and what it would take to fund them, and then determine what option is worth pursuing. So that's the plan for this first phase of feasibility study. Uh, next slide, please. You guys all know where this location is, but, um, I've gotten amazing feedback from folks that don't know where the location is, and they just cannot believe where it's located right next to the school. It's really exciting. Um, it's also caused a bit of confusion. I think some people think we're part of the Forty-seven North Bullfrog Flats project, so it's been a really great opportunity for us to see that and quickly course correct and then take hold of that message, and we've added some information to the website to clarify that although we're right next to that project, this is not that project. Uh, next slide, please. So a little bit about the timeline. Um, I added where we are at right now. It starts with the leaf that we're into fall here. And but we're gonna wrap up the, um, the survey at the end of September, and then we'll do some analysis. Um, and then we'll be able to take those results, and my plan would be to come back to you guys and share the results of the survey. Um, October through December, our consultants are gonna really work through the three alternatives that are identified in the survey results, so they'll really get deep into some of the numbers and some of those things that, um, require a little bit more, uh, detail and, um, analysis. Then in December, we're gonna be able to take those alternatives to the community and get more input. Um, and then in January, we're gonna come to the table with, this is what the community wants. This is the most feasible, and then we'll talk about what next steps. And next slide, please. So right now, if you want to help us and wanna talk to people, we want people to take the survey. And it's really easy to do. Um, I think the easiest way to do it is to go to our website, which is recreationukc.org. And there's a button right on the homepage that says, take the survey. Um, every person in a household can take the survey, so it's not one say or survey per household, if there's four members of your household. Everybody should take the survey. And then on that website, you can also sign up to receive project updates. And so as we move forward in this process, we're gonna send out updates letting people know where we're at, sharing information, sharing the survey results, things like that. So if you remember anything from today, take the survey. That's what we need to do right now. Um, next slide, I think this is it, but yeah, thank you. Um, do you guys have any questions about what we're doing or what we're planning on doing or comments? I wanna make sure that when we're updating you, it's what you want to know.
For comments, I'm just so thrilled and, um, we've got community leaders, uh, leading the charge here. Uh, and I see it's gonna happen, so. Really excited.
Anyone? Yeah, and you guys, again, I can't say thank you enough, because we can't do this without you guys, and it really feels great to be supported in the way that you've supported our organization. So thank you again. It's really, really meaningful.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you, Claire, very much.
Hey, the next public appearance is, uh, from, uh, TNC. And they, and they're requesting letters of support for, uh, Cabin Creek and, uh, oh, I don't know, Land and Water Conservation Fund. So who is it? I think, I think I know who it is. It's gonna talk to us. Uh, you're on, you're on.
All right, thanks, and I will definitely be taking that survey, Claire. Thanks for the information. Um, hi, I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Katie Pofal. I'm the Eastern Washington Community Relations Manager for the Nature Conservancy um, in the state of Washington. And today I'm joined by my colleague, Darcy Batara, our Forest Partnerships Manager, who I believe many of you already know. Um, so first, I'd like to thank Honorable Mayor McGowan, the Distinguished City Council, City Clerk Kathy Sw- and City Clerk Kathy Swanson, um, for inviting me to today's meeting to share information about and request support for two important opportunities to conserve forest lands, water quality and recreational values in Kidditas County. These projects will directly affect environmental health, economic opportunities and quality of life for residents in Clealum. Um, but before I share more information about that, I wanted to take the chance to introduce myself. Um, I'm new to this community, so as, uh, the Community Relations Manager, my goal is to work with you along with other community leaders and partners in Kidditas County to implement projects that reflect a broad suite of community needs, including climate resilience, habitat conservation, forest health, recreation, economic development and health and safety. Um, so, uh, as I mentioned, I'm new, um, and so I'm really looking forward to, um, learning more about our community, um, the city of Clealum, um, and the opportunities and challenges that you face as a community in ways that we can work together on, um, land conservation projects and community betterment. So, I'm joining you today, and as you mentioned, um, we have a request for letters of support for two projects. So I'll share a little bit more about our work, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with that, and then a little bit more about specifically the two projects. Um, and then I'd like to have some time for questions, if there's anything else you'd like to know. Um, but so as you may know, the Nature Conservancy manages thirty-six thousand acres of forest lands, uh, private lands in Kidditas County and Yakima County. Um, that is known as the Central Cascades Forest LLC. This land was purchased in two thousand fourteen with the goal of restoring these forests to a healthy state and transferring them to long-term owners and managers who can ensure that the forests are sustainably and efficiently managed long into the future. By working with established partners like the U S Forest Service, the Washington Department of Natural Resources and communities like Clealum, our goal is to ensure that these forests are healthy and resilient to climate change and wildfire risk. These forests also support strong wildlife and fish populations, produce a sustainable supply of wood and clean water, and contribute to both economic and recreational opportunities in our community. Today, we're asking you for two letters of support that are key to the success of this project. Um, the city of Clealum supported these same projects in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, and so we're asking just for a renewal of that support for the same projects, um, in the coming fiscal year. So the first one is a letter of support for the Land and Water Conservation Fund application on the Tannum watershed. This application would allow us to transition a patchwork of twelve thou- twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-seven acres of forest land to Okanagan-Wanachi National Forest, protecting key public access areas and trails in perpetuity. This project ranked very highly in previous application cycles, and so we're resubmitting again this year, hoping for full funding. We're also requesting a letter of support for the Forest Legacy Program, um, application, which would protect six thousand acres of working forests and recreation opportunities in Cabin Creek, um, a project area that we're calling the Kidditas Working Forest. This proposal ranked number twenty-four for partial funding last year. Um, and with, you know, we had your support on both of these with letters of support. It's unlikely to receive funding this year, but we believe our proposal is really strong, and it'll rank higher as long-term projects that are currently receiving Forest Legacy Program funds are completed, and they look towards new opportunities. Um, so this letter of support is a demonstration of support that is really key to success of long-term, this like overall long-term project, uh, for working forest conservation, recreation and natural values around Kidditas County. Um, and so your colleagues, uh, I believe Kathy, at the city of Clealum, has already drafted letters of support for this year. And so we'd be pleased if you could take a look, look at those, um, sign them and review and submit them to the proper contacts. Um, so I'm here and happy to answer any questions you might have, um, with my remaining time today. Um, and then I've also shared my email address with Ms. Swenson, and I'd love to speak with you or meet with you. And I'd love to speak with you or meet with you for coffee or whatever you'd like over the phone. So thanks again to the mayor, council and staff for your ongoing support and collaboration and for hearing our requests today. So I'm available for questions if you have any.
Questions? He couldn't hear that because he's way away from his mic. But can a councilman Ratliff said self-explanatory?
Is that right? Glad to hear that. Thanks for your support.
So do we have a motion?
Go ahead, yes. So I was trying to find out more about the Cabin Creek Forest Legacy Project because there's nothing attached to this letter to tell me what it is. And when I googled it, I found two sets of Board of County Commissioner minutes and two sets of City of Clealum minutes saying that we wrote letters about it, but literally nothing else on the internet about the project. So it's hard for me to know what I'm adding my name to. And I'm curious if you could give me a little more than what's in this letter, just because it doesn't tell me a lot.
Yeah, absolutely. And my colleague, Darcy Batara, will probably jump in here as well. This is, I think, my eighth week of work, so I'm still getting to know our projects. And then I'm also happy to follow up with the actual proposal itself and other details. So you can dive into the details. But this project is up on Cabin Creek, which is healthy, working, well, not healthy, it needs to be improved, but working forest lands in an area that I'm sure you know is a very popular recreation area. And the Forest Legacy Program is a source of funding that is focused on protecting forest lands and is a really good fit for this project. So as I mentioned, it's about 6,000 acres. We're looking at transferring. And as with most of our projects, these are in a patchwork within national forest lands. And so this checkerboard pattern makes it harder to manage the lands. And so there are trails and other aspects of working, working lands that would be easier to manage if they were contiguous. So this is part of a long-term plan to have this contiguous management to reduce fragmentation for forest health and, and just for recreational values as well. Darcy, did you want to jump in with anything on that?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that. So Katie's doing a great job. This is her eight weeks. I can't wait to see her at 18. But I will mention that the Forest Legacy, so there's the National Forest Boundary that surrounds kind of in funny shapes of the land that we're currently managing. Some of them are completely surrounded by Forest Service, in which case we've been prioritizing using the Land Water Conservation Fund to, to reduce that fragmentation, to make it one landscape for management. Over in Cabin Creek, that's not within the National Forest Boundary. It's, it's excluded from that. So this proposal is different. The intent is to transfer it over to ownership and management by the Department of Natural Resources. So be part of their, it'll be, be part of their trust lands. What's really unique about this is that oftentimes when DNR manages land, the trust land beneficiary receives 75% of the timber revenue. In this particular case, we're designated Kittittas County as the beneficiary of that, which is a little bit unusual, but we feel like it's appropriate because Kittittas County has 75% of their landmass is in public ownership and they don't always have resources to help support that ownership or the infrastructure that goes along with that. So this is also the best timber producing land that we currently manage. So not immediately, but in, you know, 10 years or 12 years, there will be a decent harvest on that land and 75% of that revenue will go towards, will stay in the county for managing recreational impacts. I hope that's helpful.
That is helpful. Great, thank you. In the, in the future, I guess this last time, could you include the thing that we're endorsing in with the letter? So it's something that you peruse, that's helpful, so I know what I'm adding to. Thank you very much.
God, some Ratliff has a question for you. Can you make the city of Clealum the beneficiary?
I'll get back to you on that one.
We're closer than the courthouse.
I would make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign these letters with the, the second letter going to the Department of Natural Resources. The word city is missing a Y at the beginning of the second paragraph. So with that change, I would.
As is the B in timber in the next.
There you go. So I would authorize the mayor to sign these with double spell checking done and seek a second.
Second. It's moved to seconded, authorized mayor to sign these letters to the Department of Natural Resources and to the Forest Service. And I say Forest Service. Are there questions on the motion? There are none, all those in favor with aye? Opposed? Okay, I'll be signing the letters and we'll make the proper corrections to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
There you go. Claire knows this is not church. She can leave anytime she wants.
Thank you.
Okay, now there's no business requiring public hearings and we're down to unfinished business. And we're going to look at ordinance 1609 again. And Greg Dorn is going to walk us through it. You there, Greg?
I am. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. At previous meeting when we discussed this ordinance, the council asked that for revisions be made. And one of them was to clarify that the decision maker for type one and type two permits is the city staff as designated by the mayor. And that was just to clarify so that there was no confusion about who had the appointment authority to make a correct and proper reference to the Washington State Growth Management Hearings Board. And and then to clarify that on, when a public hearing is required for changes to the city's development regulations, that it would be conducted by the Planning Commission, except when the city council at its discretion decided to conduct the hearing itself or to assign the hearing responsibility, the hearings examiner, because it would have been an option, but now we have made it clear that it's the city council that decides in the default position would be the Planning Commission. And then as, as the city council requested, we may move the approval of a short plat from a type two to a type four review, which involves a public hearing before the hearings examiner and a decision by the city council. And we moved subdivisions or long plats from type three to type four. So those were the changes council that you had asked that we made and we made all of those. In addition, the mayor asked that we add a provision that enabled, that would enable the city to extend the comment period on notice of applications from 14 days to up to 30 days. And as we did recently with the major modification for Bullfrog Flats. And so we have included that revision in the documents. And as we were in making those changes, we made some additional editorial changes to make sure that we were using terminology consistent throughout terms like major and minor modifications. And and we made those changes. And council, based on your comments at the last meeting and questions about the footnotes with the moving some additional projects into the type four category, we thought this might, a, a further revision would be appropriate and to divide type four into type four and type five. So there wouldn't need to be a footnote and it would be very clear what types of permits the, the hearings examiner conducts the hearing. And, and the city council makes the decision and which types of activities the planning commission conducts the hearing and the city council makes the decision. So you didn't ask to do that, but as we are making the changes that you did ask us to made, make, it did occur to us that we thought we could further clarify and improve the document. So we hope that you'll find that that to be an appropriate editorial change to make the document even more user friendly. So council, the, as we were reviewing all of those changes and revisions and we did go back and discuss them with the planning commission and, and the planning commission expressed their support or endorsement of those revisions, although strictly speaking, not required. They thought they were appropriate. And then council in discussing the revisions with the city attorney, the city attorney pointed out to us that state law requires that short plats be approved administratively. So your request to move short plats from the type two review to a type four review would actually be in violation of state law. Now I, in, kind of thinking back, I was trying to think, have I seen another city where short plat applications are approved by the city council? And I couldn't think of one, but that's the explanation why. Because they are in fact required to be approved administratively. So we have prepared and although we had honored your request, council, and moved short plats to type four, we have prepared an amendment. If you are so inclined, that would move the short plats back to being a type two, which is consistent with the way that they have been approved in the past and would align with state law. And then with that amendment, if council, if you were so inclined, there is also then a suggested motion that for the adoption of the, the ordinance, which would repeal and replace the city's procedures for processing land use permits as amended. So council, if you have any questions, I'm certainly available to, to answer them. And otherwise, I hope that you'll find the various changes, revisions consistent with your, your intents.
Like to just make one comment. Oh, I did receive one citizen comment that was along these same lines that he works in the, I don't know the exact field, but where you draw, where you draw these things out for developers, et cetera. And he said, I actually stand to make more money, from what I understand, they stand to make more money going with our suggestion, but no other place does it.
I do think we have an obligation to realign the state law. With the advice of our attorney there, I make a motion adopt this, this ordinance number 1609, is it?
Yes, it is.
Adopt it. And I don't see it explicitly moving the short plats back to a type two review, but I make that a part of my motion. Short plats go back.
Moved to seconded to adopt ordinance number 1609 with the provision of making a short class go back to a type two.
Inconformist with state.
Inconformist to state law. Questions on the motion? There are none, all in favor with aye? Opposed? There are none, ordinance number 1609 is passed. Now we'll go to our next one, which is the, the flood hazard ordinance number 1615. And this is an ordinance, the city well, it adopts the, the new flood control. I mean, I'm sorry about flood hazards from FEMA. I'm mumbling here. Greg, take it over.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This too has been on your agenda before. And as we've discussed, this is a two-step process. This first step would be the adoption of an interim ordinance, which is authorized by state law and can go into effect immediately. The adoption of this ordinance would meet the requirements of the Federal Emergency Management Agency and would update or would result in the city adopting the updated flood insurance maps for the city and to make the necessary changes to the flood hazard prevention regulations that FEMA and the Department of Ecology have said that the city must make in order to remain eligible for federal flood insurance. And by adopting these required measures on an interim basis, the rationale for doing that is so that we can take the other measures, which were recommended by FEMA and Department of Ecology, but not required, take them back to the planning commission and review them alongside the mandated revisions. And also to look at the measures in the critical area regulations that address flood prevention and development and flood hazard areas and hopefully consolidate them into one set of regulations so that the city has one set of regulations governing flood hazard areas, not two sets of regulations. And the adoption of this as an interim measure will provide the, the city staff and the planning commission the time to be able to thoroughly review these proposed revisions to look to, for ways to effectively consolidate them or integrate them into one. And there are also, I think, some other related matters that relate to critical areas, particularly to mapping of critical areas that we can address at the same time and then bring a complete package back to the council, have a public hearing and then do final adoption. But mayor, we felt that these matters were of such importance that it wouldn't, would not be appropriate to ask the, the planning commission to hurry up and adopt something so that we could satisfy the, the federal and state mandate. So this two-step approach will satisfy the mandate, but give us the time to properly review and properly consult with the planning commission and to afford an appropriate opportunity for public comments. So we are recommending that this interim measure be adopted tonight so that the private property owner's ability to participate in the federal flood insurance program is, is not placed in jeopardy while we complete our review.
Mr. Mayor, I, I was able to take a look at the, the FIRM maps. And Rob showed them to me just before the meeting tonight and they look very good. They look like they're drawn with a lot of intelligence, cross-sections, waterways, the whole way. And with the delineated areas that have a 1% chance of getting floodwaters on them. It really made sense and, and it appeared to be very well done. And I just, I, I like, I like getting that in place now and taking another look at the rest of it as you've outlined. So I make a, a motion that we adopt ordinance number 1615 at this time.
I'll second that. It's moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15. 16, 16. Questions on the motion? There are none?
Just a comment that there will be then the maps adopted by the city now. And some of the other details are going to the planning commission and we'll be seeing it, seeing a little more of it.
Yes. Hearing that, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 1615 is adopted. Thank you. And we will have Greg Dorn, is that, is it correct? There in 60 days, we're going to have a, a public hearing on this. A public hearing on this.
Yes.
We have to be sure to set that date at some point. Alright.
Great, thank you, mayor.
Yeah, thank you with that. So now we have from our legislative committee, a report. From Gary Burns and Beth Williams.
Well, good evening, honorable mayor and council, I come to. To discuss. The work that three of the city council folks and the city. I believe since about January, I was asked. If I was facilitating a committee to take a look at developing a handbook. For the folks at the council, but really for the population at large. Really to orient new council folks as they might come on. And have a standard document on procedures that are very Cleland specific. If you recall, maybe you don't. Was previously a class two city, but. Twelve or thereabouts, it became a code city with a strong mayor. And that has changed some of the things you can and cannot do. Some of it according to law, by the way, and. What we attempted to do, we we took some information, we took a lot of information from another city similar. And we went page by page by page, now what I will tell you. There are some things that the committee and and me in particular. Was cautious about saying these need to be talked over by the council as a whole because. It's really up to you how you would like to do these portions of that report. So what councillor Williams will talk about. Is how you wish to proceed, I would ask that you consider a study session. Or this could be concentrated on, there's no time deadline. I'd also ask to make sure that you date this one because I suspect. There will be multiple iterations before we come up with a final. So we can track them and I really want to give a kudo. Councillor Lund. He was patient enough to guide us through and change things on the spot and. I don't know anybody else in the room that could probably do that, so it was very helpful and. For once, Zoom was the best option to do that, so. Councillor Williams, Rap. Lund, Kathy. I'm gonna hand it to you and we'll do, I stand ready to do it. And finish this thing, I think it will be durable for a long time for this city. So thank you for the opportunity.
Oh, thank you very much, Gary, for all the coordinating hard work, for sure. And of course, like you said, it would have been a lot different, but you managed to do this through the COVID thing. And that's quite a deal, so Beth, you have a comment?
I don't know how much there's left to say, but. You guys have the document in front of you, it's pretty thick, we we took it from Newcastle. Which is a really pretty recently developed city and they also have a a weak mayor system, so we had to convert that. Quite a few places, you're gonna see in the document where there's gonna be yellow highlights and those are the areas that we want the council to discuss. And decide how they how you want that to to be worded. There's a lot of state law scattered throughout the document that we pretty much had to follow. We took a lot of information from Kathy on how she. How we do things in the city. City council wise and also clerk wise, there's job descriptions in there for various members of the city. So I think a working group together would be very good to have us go through the areas that need all of our input.
I will just note the things that are in yellow are literally verbatim as they were and the thing we were working from, because we didn't even want to. Start that, we figured that was especially what we needed to have as a group. And not really, just kind of leave it as it was, so.
I think a working group in about a month, give you guys a month to read that, it's pretty pretty thick, pretty involved. And then come with some ideas of how you'd like to address the yellow highlighted sections.
Perspective as well.
And staff.
And staff, and we've asked Kathy to present this to staff. Because it does refer to everybody in the city. And are there omissions, did we miss something that needs to be added?
I did notice it doesn't include the fire chief, but it it addresses the other staff heads, so I wonder if we need to include the fire chief.
I think we do. And we, you know, we have. Well, we actually have a number number of department heads, it probably doesn't have the only. Those are all, we can, that's. Easy.
And maybe a part of the study session would be to segregate that. Yeah, then there, so that they get.
Thank you, that was a lot of work.
Oh, I just wanted to comment that I didn't realize the scope of the project when we first contemplated it. I thought it was going to be as simple. As creating operating procedures like for within inside our actual meetings, I do like. Exhaustive nature of it, but I do need some time to digest because ultimately, this will be our bible. And we will hold ourselves and others accountable to the very letters of what's written here. And so I do think that having a a time to contemplate. The ramifications of certain things and certainly the yellow sections are definitely, but I I I do see. Some points that'll be raised in the white sections for sure, that we just need to as a council talk about.
Minimal, what did he want, two pages?
Yeah, I wanted two pages.
Yeah, two pages was where we started. We felt we felt like this was a important thing to give a hand to a planning commissioner, to a city council member, to. Family member of the public to be able to really. Get a holistic view of what we do and what's going on so that.
And so, to be clear, too, I have a question, we're looking to adapt what to adopt this by resolution, correct?
Correct.
So it'll carry the weight of resolution, not of code.
Correct, and then it can be changed as needed, it references code, but yeah, the idea is that we have to.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that, that's great. Okay, next we'll have, let's see. Let's see, where am I? Okay, yeah, right, there's. There's so much red ink on here. Handbook, okay, and now we'll hear from Will Bo and Justin Gibbons. And you have a presentation on the mural project, is that it? Yes, talk up here and Rob, do you have their stuff?
I do, yep.
Put a screen up, tell Rob do what to do.
If the presenter could please turn the microphone so it's towards their mouth and not towards Russ, thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mayor and distinguished council members, please excuse any informality, this is not. Generally not up on in front of a crew like this, so, but thank you for for seeing our presentation. I'm Will Bo, I live up in Roslyn.
Yeah, and I'm Justin Gibbons, I'm down in Thor.
This is our meeting spot.
Both been in the county for many years. Both students of art students graduates of Central Washington University, Will Bo and myself have collaborated. In a lot of different ways artistically over the years, we taught at a community gallery in Ellensburg, Gallery One. And for the better part of the past five or six years, we've been working on public mural projects together. And we already have, I believe, five under our belt. And should this come to fruition, this would be the the sixth larger scale mural project that we will. Have worked on together, so I think I'll let Will describe it in a little more detail for you.
First, I'd like to thank the Parks Committee and Rotary Club, Rotary Club is funding this mural and Parks Committee has. By open calls selected us, and so thank you to to that group and and for meeting with us and making this all happen. We can go to the next slide. So what we're about, want to create a mural, it's up at the. The park heading up the hill, I guess, I always know it is the pool park formerly.
City Park.
City Park, where the skate park is, it'll be on the bathroom building, which is currently just. Bathroom, it's not a mural, yeah, so. We want our our mural to be inviting, fun and educational. Has ties to the land, the history and the people, we want to give everyone a sense of ownership of this mural. This is, this is for the community, it's it's not us throwing something out for our own glorification, it's it's. It's something we want to do for the community. And something that's informative and visually stimulating, especially not only for people that live here, but people passing through. Seeing this, seeing the mural, learning something from it, learning a little bit about our community. Right, next slide. Okay, so some of the imagery we've chosen is local flora and fauna, we've got a lot of native plants there and. Animals that that you would find in this area. Birds and and deer, we've got a. A kingfisher and a chestnut. I've got, I've got it written down, as I'm up here, I'm getting nervous, I don't want to.
Looks like a trillium.
Yeah.
There's a chickadee right next to it, right? Yes, it's a chickadee.
Yarrow, bracken fern. The glacier lilies.
Under a supine and a.
We can go and do the next slide, please. So we've got also some historical features. History of people and recreation in Upper Kibbetas County, so mostly. Focused on play because we're at the park with this mural, we wanted to focus on some of the. The the play that's done in this area, the historic Cleland Ski Club. And the ski jump that you see up there to the left. That. It was just fascinating learning about this, as I was researching some of the history, going to the museums, going through a lot of books. And Central Washington University has the great audio and video library of stories told from. Local folks, so if you haven't checked that out, I highly recommend it, it's super interesting, lots of funny stories. So these are, these are some some local artifacts.
Can you explain who the people are?
Yeah, I can tell you about some of those those, so we've got Samuel Craven up there on the upper left. A revered miner and also as it ties to the Craven family. Very significant family in our area. We've got Barney and Mary Molinar, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correct, that's in the lower section, they were dairy farming. Family, they had a small dairy farm and I found out about them in. I think it was a publication made. Around the bicentennial, where a lot of people were able to interview either interview or give their stories and. I just found them to be charming, they had some good stories about their dairy. They they looked relatable, they looked like they could be my neighbors, so that's why I chose them. This Joanne Iverson, the the child up there, she helped me with some of the the research that I did. And I I found a picture of her tucked in one of the books, stole that picture, she doesn't know about that, so. Roslyn baseball player in uniform, we did have a minor league baseball team. In this area, I think that's kind of fun, especially being at the park too, where people do go to play baseball, we've got the the ski. We've got a ski jumper on that'll be on that that jump and the old auto rest sign. I just found that to be a charming.
Didn't it used to have a guy in driving clothes on top of it?
I I don't actually see any Mike's Tavern logo, I mean. Greatest establishments in all of UKC and. More a guando sausage.
I think you guys are represented by the cat on the.
So that cat is actually from the number four mine explosion, a survivor found in the mine after the explosion, the scape warp was not there. Yeah, so that that was something that was in a newspaper.
So that was the number five?
Uh, sorry, the number four mine explosion that happened in nineteen oh nine. So I I think next slide. We've got a mockup. Just the imagery on the buildings, you can get a sense of what that. Looked like, and then the next slide is the same, different perspective, if you want to kind of flip back and forth between those one, so. And we are open to to suggestions, if you guys have something you really want to see on there, we can add. Obviously, this is an all over design, there's not a specific focal point, we want to put. I guess, members. Samuel Craven up high in a place of distinction. Said something that can be revered, but so, but beyond that, things can be shifted. Skill can be shifted, once we get onsite and painting too, some things do move, but and and color palette will be simplified. From this design.
Probably between five and maybe eight different colors to keep it somewhat simple. And we haven't actually sampled out the numbers to to. Have a rough estimate in terms of how many gallons of paint we're talking about, but I would I would think at least eight or ten. But the idea is to use colors that are gonna be fun and inviting. But not too much of a eyesore that you would. Want to almost look the other way driving by because it's gonna be too glaring, so. Naturalistic colors that are are still fun and and will will catch your eye in a positive way.
Things that are, we're, well, we realize this is also a neighborhood, we don't want to end the neighbors. But we also want to make it fun and in the spirit of play.
Utilizing exterior latex paint. Which we will source from the local paint store, I think Ace Hardware, right? And and the idea is that. Hopefully this, we we have no doubt that something like this, if it's maintained, it 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 could be appreciated for. An upwards of ten years or more. We have some of our projects that that are well over five years old and they still look great and. Considerations for anti graffiti could be considered with our experience, we find that. It's better to just decent color swatches of all the paints that were used and maybe periodically touch up. And and just set aside a day or two each spring, perhaps we could have a a mural cleanup day. I would be more than happy, I think both of us to come up here and address any, should there be any kind of vandalism? I think that's better in the long run, because if you coat the thing with the varnish, then you're dealing with something that could be a problem. If and when you decide to repaint this building, if there's some sort of varnish on top of that paint. So that would, that would be our our suggestion in terms of durability and longevity of the the project.
My eyes have gotten big and I love it.
I'd like to ask the council, council, I see several references to Roslyn. And the Mullenary Molinar's were actually in Manash Dash with their farm, does it matter?
Yeah, to me it does not matter, and I I think that's perfect. To be provincial at all.
The only people that can use that bathroom are Cleo my.
No, my only question is, as far as these things, besides a verbal telling of the story. Is there gonna be like QR codes or something to interpret the images so that. Come by, they know what these are? Like, that's all I'm just, I mean. That, you know, even just a QR code that led you to the to a page that gives you a quick abstract.
Or it easily leads you to the carpentry museum where all of this is explained pretty well, is it?
I I love that idea, that's a little bit out of my wheelhouse. But that's, that's probably not.
That was something we thought about, or potentially even making a sign that has like a legend on it. We could add somewhere on the on the building too.
Yeah. Yeah, just something so that people know what the things are on it and they're not like.
So the chambers website. All that kind of stuff could be put on there.
You mean the city's website? Yeah, I think it, I think, yeah, anyways. Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, anyways, that can always work out in the future. But it's just something we need to think about as a council of having some type of simple signage, so that people are like, what? Just happened to that building, you know, it can actually just explain how it.
Things like the Cleoam Ski Club are really interesting, because Cleoam at one point in its history was the hub of all skiing in Washington State. Right, it, it was, it was people traveled here to ski, and I think people won't, like, I'm writing this down, like, I'm going to make shirts and sell the hell out of them. You know, as they say, scale, sale, ski club on them. You know, but I don't, I think that's a really cool thing that is distinctly ours, and it will spark by people like, what do you mean ski club? Well, guess what, nineteen thirty-eight, we were the hub for all skiing in this, in the country.
Make, you, you got your hand up?
Well, I was thinking there. When you're a councilman, one time you, you're getting onto this.
So any suggestion is that other murals in town that need patching up. So I guess, when you, when you're in your free time, take a look at those and see what, when you get this one done, you know?
I think this is a great idea.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, the student baker stuff, Andy Durst was the, had the student baker garage. And he was an amateur painter himself, and he painted his own. Company signs and murals and all that kind of stuff. And their student record garage is long gone, Andy's long gone, but it's signed.
So, then I would move that we approve the concept that's been presented tonight. And seek a final proposal from the Rotary and take a second.
Moved a seconded to approve this in concept and. We'll get a final from the Rotary at some point.
What would you be looking, we, so we presented pretty much everything at the beginning, so essentially.
Then if this is the final, then I would say that we, okay, that I would. I would amend my motion, I would replace my motion, is that cool at the second or?
Yes.
Okay, I motion that we, that we approve.
Yes.
That we approve this as, as presented.
Yes, it's wonderful.
And permit them to proceed to muralize the city property.
Okay, so moving a seconded to approve the concept, and I'll make a comment. Artwork by committee does not work.
I mean, that is Mike Rosetti, the mayor up there on the wall, I mean, you, that's a great black and white.
Mike Stavern and Mike Shulbrecker.
Yes, he was the mayor and at the tavern. Any other, any other questions on? Go ahead.
I just want to make one quick note, although Rotary is. The intermediary for the funds, the funds were actually. From the Kittittas County enhancement, Rotary made a request to them and they. Approved five thousand dollars to, to pay these gentlemen to, to get this done, so I want to make sure to clarify that they were the ones who actually.
Any other questions on the motion? Yeah, the, the only other comment is. It, it, this is a park that ties our community together, so having nods to portions of the whole community is great.
Yes, so we're, we're taking a vote, we don't need to hear from you anymore.
Give you one more detail, in terms of timeline, this will be completed by. Let's say end of October, so this will be a fall project. We, we, we're anticipating, once we actually get set up and we're ready to paint, two to three weeks and we should be able to knock it out.
Okay, all those in favor with aye? Is there dare in opposition? Hearing none, you have our blessing to go ahead and. Paint the place, I like the. One of my favorite birds. Thank you, guys. Okay, all right, so next, we have an update on the land exchange. With Kittittas County, Mike Engelhardt is gonna. I'll walk us to that one. Mike, are you there?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, you betcha, Rob, can you share my screen, please? So I did make you a co-host. Gotcha. This might not be as eloquent as some of the PowerPoints, I had short amount of time to put this together due to some. Excitement that happened today, so. But this is what you get. As most of you might remember, we discussed this not too long ago, that, and everybody's well aware that. Kittittas County Public Works built a brand new facility up across the street from the high school, or excuse me, the grade school. Next to the transfer station. We had a conversation and a discussion with Kittittas County Public Works brought. Public Works Director as well as Kittittas County Sheriff and with. Some other members of Kittittas County and started the negotiations about. Cleoam Public Works possibly somehow. Acquiring their old county shop that's located around Third Street. The discussions that we had was a land swap. So that there was value for value. And what we came up with is out at the Cleoam Municipal Airport, which you'll see in your packets. I'm going to throw it up here, this highlighted yellow is the five acres that they're proposing. To acquire in exchange for their old facility. As you can see, this borders Airport Road, it's right at the entrance, it's. Still a long ways away from the actual airport itself. And is not in effect with any of the long-term airport growth plans that we have. So with that, just to kind of show you, they're going to end up with this five acres of land. This is the current Kittittas County shop that we would then be acquiring. And is, this is going to kind of bounce around and show you different projections and we'll discuss them a little bit. This is a sealed off bay, which I have pictures of that I'll get to. This is where they do all their small engine repairs, their rebuilding of the tire chains that I'd mentioned earlier. That we're trying to do on our con- concrete shop floor right now. They have an actual bench built in here for it. There's all the oil tanks. All their solid, their hydraulic fluids, automatic transmission fluids, everything gets stored in here so that it's all in one little heated building. And does not take up any space inside the shop area. I'm sure most of you have been to our current public workshop. And it's anything less than organized and desirable. Then you have these two, there's actually three bays there, which are these three right here. And then this partition wall and then three more bays, and as you can see, they've got dump trucks housed in there. Our current shop has zero covered storage for our equipment. So therefore, it's all getting just tortured by the weather. Buried in snow takes us hours on end in the mornings to get our equipment uncovered during a snow event. And then you got to heat them up, everything else, so it's, this would be amazing for our snow and ice equipment. You have this structure over there, which is this big four bay shop. Ideally, in a perfect world. These bays would be enclosed, and this is where we would then have this a heated. Storage facility for our back truck, which has to remain in a heated facility, so it doesn't freeze. Our water truck, our sweeper and our video camera truck for the sewers. That would be where those would be placed. All of these buildings. Have timers in them, so you will never see the lights being left on while the guys go home on accident or whatnot. They walk in, they rotate a timer switch, they fire their equipment, they drive away. Five minutes later, the light shut off. So it's a pretty energy efficient way to do it. As you can see from where I'm standing, back by the other bay, it's a very large yard. Here's the original actual. Mechanics bays, which are those three bays, and then attached to it is the offices. So again, here's just another angle, you can see they got all their plow blades lined up here, it's just. Great facility for what we do. One of the situations that we currently have, when it comes to any of our projects, is all of our material. Is stockpiled in different locations around the city, because we don't have room. Or raw land that the city owns, that we can stockpile material, as you can see here along this fence on the left. Those, we would build some bunkers and have our snow and ice sand. We would have, you know, some five eights, a mention of quarter of the materials that we use on a regular basis. So just the time that we would save from happening to go get a loader and run to the different locations around town that we have material. Would be just huge for our crew. Again, this was just showing, these are all LED lights that are in these buildings, so that everything is energy efficient. Just a great facility, they did an awesome job on it, so. This is walking into the man door, into the office slash break room area, as you can see, it's very clean. Way better than what we got now, this would be the office space. Where the lead would have his office, I would have a desk in there. Nice new restroom facility. Where some people get scared to go in our current one. This would be the actual break room. On this shelf here on your left, right there where the garbage can is, I guess I should ask, can you guys see my cursor when I'm running it around?
Yes.
Okay, so this right here is actually, as you can see with a laptop, it's actually a laptop docking station, something Matthew would probably get a kick out of. And Stephen, it's got all the chargers already there for the iPads, for the laptops, everything. Huge break room for the desk right now, we are having a hard time getting five people in our break room. It's very cozy. Have all of our information boards, it'll be easier for the guys to communicate and use their Post-it notes and stuff. Great locker facilities for the guys. So they can leave their contaminated, dirty clothes at work and not take them home. And contaminate their vehicles and their home laundry as well. This is the actual mechanic shop area, as you can see by the size of Chuck walking across the floor there. It's a pretty good size and a pretty good upgrade from what we currently have. My understanding, talking to Chuck, which is going to be very beneficial for all of us, number one, this is a heated building, so. The mechanic will be in a heated facility. The air compressor that you see here stays over in the corner on your left here, there's actually a hot pressure washer. That stays. I'll get to a picture momentarily, but that pressure washer is actually wired to an outdoor wash bay. So when the guys come in with dirty equipment and stuff, they can hose it off easily, right now we use garden hoses. And drag out an old pressure washer and it's pretty cumbersome. This is the inside of that shop I was referring to, as you can see up here with the hose reels, these would stay. These fifty-five gallon drums are full of motor oil and hydraulic fluid, those are the most common oils that we use in our world. So this is on a really long hose reel, so when the guys are doing their pre-trips on the equipment. Instead of going and grabbing little gallon jugs and happening to walk around, this is also a great way. For us to control our inventory. We have a, we're lucky to have a great staff that we have, but I know from experience in previous industries, when you start dealing with. Little gallon jugs and quarts of oil. Mysteriously, all of a sudden, why are we going through so many cases of oil, this kind of helps regulate how much usage we're doing. These are metered, those little red. Diodes right there, those are actually meters, so. When the mechanic is filling up a truck and or the employees, when they're doing a pre-trip and they need a quart of oil. This regulates and monitors that, and then that way there, we can put it in our iWork system to monitor for each piece of equipment on oil usage and whatnot. The blue bins you see back there, these are all different ATF fluids, all the other. Odd oils that we would be using, and as you can see by the hoses, they come down here to little. Russ will get a kick out of this, they're almost like beer taps, so you literally pop those and fill up your. Gallon jug with whatever of these odd oils that you'll need, go use them. Away you go, this is the bench I was telling you about, you can see the links right there, this is where they rebuild their tire chains, so the guys aren't laying. You know, stretching them out on the floor, happening to kneel down on the floor. These are, this bench is built stout and ergonomically correct, which is great. This bench that Chuck's leaning up against, this is where they rebuild and do a lot of their own. As you can see, the chainsaw laying there, their own small engine repair type stuff, tight, sharpening their chainsaw blades. Organizing all of their stuff, and this building is insulated and heated, so as you can see, they have their quick crete, they have a lot of their. Things they need, they even got cat litter, their little scoop away buckets down there, in case you have an oil spill. So it's just a great facility set up wonderfully, this is that bay that's outside of that, you can see the. How big this building is by the size of the backhoe, that's why I took this picture, just to show the massiveness of this facility. And this was that outdoor wash bay that I was referring to, so as you can see up here, this is where it's plumbed in from the outside. You undo this hose to winterize it, to drain the system, so you don't have to worry about it freezing after use, if you use it during the winter. And then you just simply plug this hose into there, then you've got an overhead wand, just like at the car wash, and you can hose down all of your equipment and do what you need to do, so. At this point, what we are. Looking for is just permission from the council to give us the green light to move forward with the short plat. Once we give the county the approval to go ahead and continue with the short plat. Then they'll start working on that and we'll proceed with coming to the council to have you guys vote on accepting the short plat and the. Quick deed for the exchange. Any questions?
First question, reading the resolution that was presented before us, and, and it contemplates trading. Five twenty-five oh thirty-five for eighty-nine, three one, three four, am I missing? It was contemplated in the first, whereas that we want to acquire. Both of those parcels is one of those not owned by the county, then the nine, I know three, one thirty-four. Or are they both owned by the county and just not contemplated in the?
If you go to the county assessor's map, there's actually two parcels on that property.
Right, what I'm saying is, but when it says be it further resolved that the board of county commissioners accepts the five acre. Five two five oh three five for eighty-nine, eight ninety-three, one thirty-four, does that mean that we don't get? I know three, one thirty-four, and that's a separate negotiation, and we're just contemplating it, or is it just a missed parcel in the?
It's, I can address that a little bit. It, it is two parcels that the county would be. Two parcels with everything on it, that the county would be giving to us, and then we would give them the one parcel. Out at the airport.
So if they were to reason, pass this resolution, there would need to be some, some rewriting, I'd imagine then.
Yes, also, I, let me point out too, that one of the reasons why we can't do this right now is because the. That the airport five acres doesn't have a parcel number yet, that process is in, it won't be till October. That we can actually put down what the parcel number for that is, and that's why we can't actually do.
So yeah, so that answers the first, the second question I have is, we've made clear our intention for the property that we're looking to acquire. Have they made clear their intention for the property that they're seeking to acquire? Because I'm hearing inquiries, the reason I'm asking is because I'm, I'm hearing inquiries from the residents of that. Of the adjacent properties to parcel two, who are getting city notices from our city planning about intentions, et cetera, or. You know, possibilities there, and they're all questions as to what's going on there, and I don't have a good answer.
Well, I can tell you that what. The sheriff's department, search and rescue needs a facility, and that's what led to this discussion. The sheriff department said, we want to move in there.
So that's what their intent on.
That is their intent. Okay, it's to put the sheriff's search and rescue facility at that property then.
Okay, so you just need to be, you know.
And we can, that can be clarified.
Yeah, we just want to be clear with the public, because I'm just getting these inquiries, and they're like, well, you're on the council, you should know.
We just find it out, so yeah, they gave you heck for it, I'm, I'm sure, but that.
Those are my only concerns.
Okay, Ken, do you have?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is a, this is a, a, a great uh, exchange, and I support it, and so yeah, I, I think we should proceed with this short part.
So, Mayor, um, if I may, uh, there was a chat in, in the Zoom here. And M Myers said that uh, says, may I please be heard on this agenda item after Mr. Engelhardt? And so I just wanted to ask you, is all.
I know it's unorthodox, but being as it was sprung on us, I would sure like to hear what the public has to think before we well, I mean, we're just kind of, so.
So what we're, what, all we're doing right now is that we're contemplating doing this, but since we won't be able to finalize this till sometime in October. Mike, the county crew is moving out, Mike wants to start moving in. And so we don't want to have him start doing that if you don't think we're gonna follow through. That's the reason why we're saying.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I just am uncomfortable with us making exceptions for the, for public policies, we're not making the decision tonight, there'll be a chance to comment on it, cause the next meeting is not coming out of our agenda, so.
Well, but we do want to uh contemplate proceeding with a short plat, which is just a, the beginning step.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm saying for public comment, we, our rules are, we don't allow comment on agenda items, is why I think we should ask.
Technically, we have no rules, we're the wild west, but that's our common practice.
So my, my point is, is that we are, we have public comment on non-agenda items, we don't allow currently comment on agenda items. I don't like making exceptions, cause it makes the rules out of money.
Yes.
And since we're not making a decision tonight, I would ask the person who wants to make a comment, they can comment at our next meeting when this will not be on the agenda. So that we're not making exceptions instead of addressing that.
Alright, okay, so that's, so that's what we're presenting to you guys. That uh, this is the direction we're going, this is what our intent is, and uh, you had, do you see any reason to say, hold it?
Well, so we're not going to proceed.
We're not gonna.
Project, but we I want you to, I want you to proceed with the short plat.
We are definitely proceeding with the.
So you, you don't need a motion from the council for that either.
Oh no. Okay, so then I would, then I would say yes, the, then you, you, do I foresee anything? I can say that the landowners adjacent to it um, have made it, you know, clear their intent that they don't, they don't want building uh next to them. But they, I believe it was with the understanding that there was going to be um residential building close by.
No.
They may have not, they may not have a problem, but before I made a final decision, I'd sure like to know what their thoughts are, certainly they're not they're not citizens of our city, but we would like to at least know before we made a final agreement with the county, at least that we're doing it, that we're, you know, going for or against the wishes of their residents. Okay.
So Mayor, um, just real quick, I just wanna make sure, cause Mr. Myers is just sitting there waiting uh to, if he could be heard or not, um.
That's what, so.
They, they said no.
So.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, if you wouldn't mind, uh, Mr. Myers, uh, to come to the meeting, and then you can comment at all, it won't be on the agenda. And there won't be any decisions made, that's what the council's deciding. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Move this in. Uh, inter local agreement with Roslyn for automatic fire department aid, yeah, you're up.
Our mayor, city council, uh, something that I've been working on for quite some time. Um, this is the exact same agreement we are pretty close to the same agreement we signed a few years back or uh, council approved mayor to sign a few years back, along with myself with South Cleo. What this does is this takes uh separate fire entities, it makes the page mutual. It's something I've been trying to do with the upper county for quite some time, and I'm very close to this, I've got a verbal commitment uh from both Roslyn and Ronald, uh, they both want to pursue this openly, which we don't fight. I'm asking that council uh would uh take my recommendations, uh, I would like to sign this, and I would like uh, you guys to be able to approve the mayor to sign our half of the agreement. That's still uh in place is being uh at this time Roslyn and Ronald will give on their side. So, any questions? This was approved by legal. It's been totally approved, uh rewrote by legal, so.
There was some central changes from the last.
The, the, the only change that was recommended was by uh past chief, uh, Sky of Shot, as he was concerned with the three-year commitment, wanted to change it to a year, so we honored that. Uh, and, and just in the process, uh, he just wanted to look at how that worked. Uh, how we worked well together, and then after that, we'll go for the three year, or just take it a year by year uh basis, so, uh, that was the only change between.
I make the motion the mayor sign the inter local agreement for automatic aid between Cleo and Roslyn.
Move the second to authorize the mayor to sign the inter local agreement for automatic aid between the city of Cleo and the city of Roslyn. Questions on the motion?
Well, rather than the mayor, I'm the chief of the center, right?
Yes, right.
Can I add one more thing, and I do apologize, I was contacted by uh Chief Jackson this morning. Um, he has, he rewrote this to say Ronald, uh, and got it back to me. Rob has redone that, and it's ready to go. Um, I've been currently trying to work on both entities, uh, at this time, it's the exact same thing, it just says Ronald instead of Roslyn. Um, I'd like to actually try to get both of those signed on our half, uh.
Well, let's, let's, this vote on this one, we'll do one at a time.
Okay.
Okay, uh, questions on the motion? Hearing all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Uh, of those opposed, hearing none, the mayor will sign the central agreement. Now, you have the exact same agreement basically, uh, with the uh, the, the uh uh, Ronald Fire Department, which is what, fire district six.
Well, I approached fire district six quite some time back, um, along with Roslyn Fire. Um, Chief Jackson got back to me today, he's been working with his board members uh to get this approved. Uh, he feels really secure on his side that he's gonna be able to get that passed, he's got a meeting in the next couple days. Um, he actually contacted me this morning and said, let's, let's move forward, I want this to happen. And so I, in place, got this turned back over to Rob, and he reprinted it with Ronald's uh name in where Roslyn was, this exact same contract, it'll just be a visible smoke or flame agreement with Roslyn, Ronald, and South Cleo, all three entities of volunteer fire departments would be paged simultaneously um, to provide uh possible structural protection.
Okay, Steven?
I would move that we uh authorize the mayor and fire chief to sign the inter local agreement for automatic aid between the city of Cleo and fire district six.
Second. Move the second to authorize the mayor sign the inter local agreement for automatic uh aid between the city of Cleo and the uh fire district six. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed, inter local will be signed. Hey, thank you. Okay, uh, next, uh, Rob, you're gonna walk us through a resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero two zero, official newspaper?
Yeah, it's, um, thank you, honorable mayor, city council, uh, this is a, uh, something we do every year, and this year uh is no different than last, we, we went out to bid and we got, received one bid uh from the Northern Kid Test County Tribune, and this resolution is, is set uh to uh to uh name them as our official newspaper.
Move the lead. Pass revolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero two zero.
Second.
Move the second it to, uh, to adopt, uh uh, where is it, resolution, uh twenty-twenty-one dash uh as zero two zero, and it was so fast, I couldn't even hardly keep up with you guys, uh. Let's move the second it, uh, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, uh, the official newspaper has been, and it actually doesn't say who it is. I put it is the uh record, okay, then, uh, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero two, two, and it's adopting an updated play handbook. Rob, what's going on?
What's going on? Okay, thanks, honorable mayor, city council, uh, from time to time, I do review our, um our employee handbook, um, I did, I'm sorry, I apologize for giving you the entire book, but there was really no other way that I felt you know, just so that you knew that there was just basically on page twenty-four, one uh, one item being changed, um um, and, and that is to increase the uh vacation accrual uh from two hundred and forty hours to three hundred hours. Uh, while I know that time away is, is very important to employees. Uh, there, the, the demand of the cities are, are increasing, and sometimes employees don't have the opportunity or even need, want to have the opportunity, cause they're so busy to take uh vacation, so um, I feel that, that this, this will boost employee morale. Um, and, and make, uh, basically make the three hundred hours uh maximum accrual also with all city employees, there is one group of employees that have this already, and then this would make it so that all the employees would, would have the three hundred hour maximum. Any questions?
Yeah. Okay.
Steven?
Yeah, so the, the three hundred hours uh is earned at whatever, it's earned at an hour, you know, as an hour, it's not earned as a dollar rate, is that correct?
Correct, as an hour.
So then the payout, say somebody were to bank these, you know, at whatever point, how how often, like how much does somebody typically accrue in a year? Even just ballpark?
Oh, maybe a hundred and fifty hours?
Okay, so, I'm, I'm just looking at, you know, somebody comes, they, they bank, they bank these up in there. You know, they're, you're, or they accrue these in, you know, at a time when they're less, and then as they graduate, you know, as their pay has graduated, then they're paid out at the higher rate. And then also you have the, the potential, and I get it, it's, it is a benefit, and so I'm not knocking that it's a benefit. I just wanna make sure we're not jeopardizing our uh, our budget, when one of these, when an employee has to leave and we have to onboard a new person. Um, you know, that, that we're having this, these huge payouts as we have, if, if we begin to get some kind of turnover, you know. Uh, we've seen, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that it never happens, I'm just contemplating in the event that a police department wants the whole scale. Uh, you know, resign, then we have huge payouts, I mean, obviously we'd have other problems at that point. And I'm not, and I'm even saying that we're in danger of that, I'm just needing to contemplate that, when we make big jumps that aren't even, don't seem to be incremental here, um, and so.
What's, yeah, ti- sorry, yeah, Steve, to, to answer that, yeah, uh, so Rob, uh, Robin also, or, you know, our treasurer. Uh, we do have to have um a line item for liability, and, and so we, we will have that covered. Um, and pretty much is covered uh now, um, in our budget. Um, I mean, she has to make an estimate, not everybody's gonna retire, or not everybody's gonna leave all at once, so um, but we do have a line item for liability to the city, and, and Robin believes this, this is also a, a good step to go, to do.
All this impact that line item, I guess, what's it, what's it expected to be?
I mean, where I'd be comfortable voting on it, I'd just like to know what that, that change is, cause we're going from thirty we're basically adding another week and a, and a, and a half a day to everybody's ability to accrue, and which means they could potentially get paid more hours than, than they are worked, you know, and especially with overtimes and other stuff. Um, that they could potentially be making normal hours, making overtime, and then also making you know, being paid out vacation at the exit of, which, it, you know, at, at, at present is their right. But we're increasing that right to, you know, by you know, in some cases, you know, say we go an average of some, say we say an, an average pay of thirty an hour times uh, seven point five, you know. You know, uh, that's just their payout, but then you also gotta figure the other taxes and other stuff that's paid on it. Um, we could be, you know, increasing, basically saying that we're, we're handing every employee I'm just, again, these are just napkin figures, another four hundred dollars for, you know, potentially. We just need to know how that's gonna affect the budget.
Right.
So, you know. I don't know what percentage right now of, of, of all employees have that three hundred. If you, or rough, roughly like a third, a quarter.
I would say a third, yeah, I would say a third, so, uh, you know, out of twenty-five. Yeah, about eight have it, and um.
But we should just know, we should just know what those. Voting on it, I'm not conceptually against it necessarily, I just wanna, I need to be educated before on the impact that it'll have.
So you're I, I, I'm a little unclear what you're asked, so, so the impact would roughly?
I need to know that, you know what, what it's gonna increase the one line item on the liability. Or is that, I mean, is that how we account for it then?
Right.
I just needed, okay, yeah, what that, what it was, and what it's gonna be next year.
I was just curious, with this change, are we also encouraging more vacations, cause I, I get letting you accrue more time, but it sounds like really the damage is behind this is that there's more work going on, and we really need people not to get burned out, so are we at the same time encouraging people to take, to use this time, cause I think that's probably more important for morale than being able to bank it and potentially cash it out at some point, is saying, you need to take vacations so that you don't get burned out. Um. And so I, I feel like that should be, that should go along with this, that we're, we're actively encouraging the staff to utilize this time, not just bank it.
Right, yeah, I, I, I definitely am encouraging that, uh it, it, and then the time comes and something comes up and they have to reschedule it, because, you know, it, it is a something that the city's, so, is happening, you know, there's a meeting going on and we have to be there, so, uh would, to answer your question though, yes, I, I do try to encourage that and make sure that people are taking time off. Um, this would just allow at least uh a few people right now to, to be able to, uh you know, not lose their hours, I guess, um, potentially, potentially.
Yeah, we can get the figures.
We'll give, we'll, we'll come up with some of the economic, uh.
Again, I, I, yeah, yeah, I think next meeting, we should be able to have movement on this.
Okay, okay, yes, that's great. Okay.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash uh zero two three, mending the cemetery fee schedule twenty twenty-three. Beth, are you gonna walk us through that one?
You guys remember, I don't know, it was a couple of months ago, we changed the fee schedule for the city cemetery, trying to get ourselves out of debt. Cause we were losing all the tax money, it was about twenty-two thousand dollars every three year to keep the cemetery going. So we raised the rates, we made an in-city residence fee schedule and an out-of-city residence fee schedule. And so there was some concern from people and, and also from Henry, the funeral director, Johnston. That he, that that was kind of unfair to those people who have grown up in this upper county community. Consider Laurel Hill their home cemetery, but they're just not Cleo residents. Um, you know, people who grew up in South Cleo are basically Cleo residents. Um, they're outside the city limits now, because they moved out in the country, they still feel that they're city, city residents. So we went back to, we went and met with Henry, and we came up with a fee schedule that included non-city residents. But residing within the boundaries of the Cleo School District again. So that those people would be included in a lower rate than out, outside the city limits, but it's still gonna be higher than in-city rates, but lower than. in-city rates, but lower than, uh, out of the, out of the county rates basically, or out of the area rates. And Henry went through these and compared them to other cemeteries that he interacts with and says that our rates are now at the same level of their, they're not unreasonable. They seem super high to us because we're used to having cheap rates, but the cemetery needs new water system and there's a lot of things that need to be fixed at the cemetery, so. Um, I'm asking that you guys, uh, say yes on this new, new rates that are three different steps.
Beth, I, I really like it. I just, uh, it, there's a column that says cemetery rates, endowment and current rate.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain those?
Kathy can explain it better than I can. Kathy, what, what's the endowment about?
Continued, it's the continued care of the cemetery.
That's, that's correct. It's, it's like the old style, um, what do they call that? Uh, continuing care, continuing lot care, where people paid X amount of dollars to, uh, keep the cemetery updated and, and the plots cleaned and whatnot. So it helps to pay the, the cost to have it mowed and trimmed and the graves taken care of, resorted when they are, when necessary. So it's, it's, it's like continuing lot care, only it isn't RCW that, that we charge this endowment.
Yeah, so then the, the rate is the far right column.
Correct.
I make a motion. Thank you, committee and Beth. Uh, make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty one dash oh twenty three with the new cemetery rates fee schedule.
I would second.
Move the second, there was, uh, Ken made motion and Matthew one beat Stephen to the second. Uh, two, uh, accept resolution, uh, twenty twenty one, zero two three, uh, adopting the twenty twenty one cemetery rate fee schedule. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is passed. Okay, 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 where are we now? Okay, it looks like we're, we're under a holiday lighting and Debbie, Bill, and Lucy Temple are, I assume, online and they're gonna make a presentation, is that it?
No, I believe so. We have, it's been considered by the, um, it's been presented to the committee. Okay. It's generally the people.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we have the, I guess they're here if you have questions.
Committee, report. It's kind of odd that we would afford them the same, the luxury that we wouldn't afford to citizens of the county. But anyways, we've already have a recommendation. We like to actually give it to the council. This is typical protocol. Yes. Okay, so, um, let me find, let me find, uh, paperwork here real quick. All right, so our recommendation is that we approve the twenty twenty one lodging tax fund application with the following provisions, uh, that the, um, let me find the two. That we funded in the amount of, uh, twenty six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. With, um, with a committee review of the final, like, how it's gonna be spent, review and approval. And so I would make that recommendation. I would motion to that effect. Seek a second and then love to discuss it.
Sorry.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to, uh, authorize the lighting, uh, but at what?
The lodging tax to grant the application in the amount of twenty six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. With the provision that basically the county overs, or the, the committee oversee the line items, uh, in the twenty twenty one budget. That basically we have, we need to, we need to work with the applicants and then come to a, you know, you know, an agreement, but I don't think the council needs to sit around and like go through every line item.
Okay, so that, so, so I guess the motion is to authorize, uh, to accept the, uh, grant for twenty six thousand five hundred with the oversight of the, uh, lodging tax, that, that summarizes. Fairly good.
So.
As a motion?
Yeah.
I, I guess. My understanding of that was, yeah, potential for that amount to change after we have our, is that?
Uh, they tend to, I, my understanding was we didn't want to increase it. We didn't want to decrease it from last year. That was my, from, from the, the committee and so that was, that was the suggestion uh, after the discussion that the three of us had, the, the committee had. Um, and now that we're, we, yes, the motion's certainly on the table and so I'll, I'll describe it. Um, as we see some, some big changes without any kind of meaningful, um, explanation. Why we wanted to prove it tonight, not just flesh it out and then come back is, uh, the, the conversations that we had had about, they need to know that there's commitment of funds so they can go forward with this. We don't want to stifle this project altogether.
Okay.
But we wanted to go through the line items with the applicant and, uh, not in a public forum, um, but with the committee to, to, to nail down what's essential, uh, from the city's perspective.
So maybe better said, we didn't afford them the opportunity to talk to us.
Yes.
At the committee level.
Right.
So we'd like to at least fund the amount from last year where we, so they can get started. We have conversations about the additional and then potentially come back with an amendment.
Yeah, we could certainly come back, yeah.
Kind of what my, yeah, that potential for that amount.
Go forward, the details are forthcoming.
Well, yeah, essentially give them what we gave them last year because we didn't afford them the chance.
We can always grant, we can always grant the application more funds.
Right.
And we can always grant the application, yeah, the, the application more funds. But we need to sit down and talk of this, but what we, we wanted them to know they at least have last year's money. And so they can go forward and they can get the contractors onboard, et cetera. And then we could sit down and potentially grant more to the application, yeah.
So, and last year's is how much?
Twenty six thousand five hundred.
Okay, twenty six five twenty?
Yeah.
And it could increase, but that's not a part of the motion.
No, but, but, so to be clear, but to be clear, it could, I mean, yeah, we have that authority.
We're letting you know that there's a very likelihood that we're gonna talk to them and potentially come back with.
Oh, yeah. I'll find, yeah, right, but they, they, they need to know that they have, they need to have the confidence that they're at least being funded amount of last year so they can go forward and then within a very short amount of time, you know, next meeting, you'll know the final request, the final grant.
What would, what might the final one be?
The amount of their full, their full request was thirty eight.
Yeah.
Three twenty nine.
Where? Yeah, thirty eight, three twenty nine.
Okay.
On page thirteen of the document.
Okay.
So they'll be, they're. At their fault, we just have not had a, a ability to be able to consider this.
That's right.
And so we needed to be able to have emergency consideration.
Our fault, but we didn't, we didn't schedule this enough time to talk to them, so.
I understand. So I'm wondering, was there a motion made?
The motion made was to.
Okay, gotcha, all right. And then this was discussion on the most. Where are we?
Where do you get paid the big?
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Folks, okay, they can proceed and you'll, uh, advise us in the future.
With haste.
Okay. So, Pangracy Work Committee, what do you have for us? Who is Pangracy? Does it sound like there is Pangracy Work Committee?
John and Steve and I, and I figured I wasn't included because I was on one of the nominations.
I was, I did not know I've been appointed yet.
So, so there is none, there is no committee report.
I haven't been to a committee meeting.
Then we will, we will get the resources and are we, so just to be clear, we are the, the committee?
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll convene and get to you by next meeting.
And I have to bypass with whatever it's worth.
She has to recuse herself. She's one of the nominations, okay, all right.
And we'll, yeah, we'll get together. By next meeting, we'll have a recommendation for the council.
Okay.
All right.
That's great. Okay, so now. So we're. Okay, so now we're gonna go into executive session and, uh, there'll be no, uh, let's see. There'll be no action taken after, uh, and we, uh, I actually forgot to ask, Alex, how much time do we need? So we'll have to ask you to leave. Otherwise, for executive session, you're the only one here.
Mayor, let's start at fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, and so otherwise we all leave here and go into the room. And really, um, we're gonna, the exec session is gonna last, uh, fifteen minutes. And, uh, hang on a minute, you know, uh.
Oh, oh, hold on, Steven, uh, they're on mute, mute.
You're right, sorry about that. I, I. Prematurely muted.
Uh, mayor, you're gonna have to say all that again.
Say what again?
He was, he had just simply dismissed, uh.
I haven't, I haven't started the executive session script yet. I'm just making sure. Okay. I know the online people need to know that we are, that we're gonna go into executive session for period of fifteen minutes to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency litigation to which the agency is a party, RCW, forty two point three zero point one one zero, print of the one. Uh, the council is not expected to take final action following this executive session. So, uh, when we're ready here, uh, someone have a good clock besides that one up there?
Uh, I have eight twenty four.
So, Rob, are we muted? Is everybody still on? What's going on, on the screen? There's all these people.
Right, the executive session, I believe, is going to happen in a separate room. I would not feel comfortable doing it in a room with listening devices present.
Okay.
That's how we have.
Okay, so we're gonna go to the other room and it is now, uh, eight, uh, twenty five. Okay, it's, uh, what time is it now? What time do you got, Ben?
Oh, uh, eight forty, eight forty.
It's, okay, uh. Okay, so eight thirty nine, we're back from executive session, there'll be no, uh, further comments. Session. So. John?
Thank you.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.